We will now reconvene the City Commissioners Meeting. Would everyone please rise for an invocation by Pastor Dames, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, led by Commissioner Casella.
Good evening, may we all pray. Our God and our Father, we come in disappointed time, as humble as we know how, bowed heads and on our hearts, pausing just to tell you thank you. Thank you for allowing us to see a brand-new day. We thank you for your mercies that are new each and every day. Father, it is our humble prayer that you would bless this commission tonight, one by one in name by name. We pray, oh Father, that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding. Allow them to understand the impact of their decisions, how it affects the people of this great city. We pray for the entire staff, Lord. We pray for our police chief. We pray for the city manager. We ask that you would bless their families. We pray for this county. We pray for this state. And we pray for our federal government. Father, we just need a touch from you. We need a word from you. And we would be ever so careful to give you the praise, the honor, and the glory. It is in your son's name that we pray. We ask it in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit and the people of God did say, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We previously had a closed-door session, and now we have just reconvened. And so I am moving for any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda.
Mayor, I just would request that my community support funds, that item be moved up, just to help the individuals who are here to receive that get out of here faster.
You would like it to be before Consent Agenda?
Wherever you'd like to put it, just early on the agenda, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So that'd be Item 12C moved up. I'd also like to move up Item 12A before Consent Agenda, because we see Habitat for Humanity is here. And then I also would like to add a new announcement, F, to introduce our new Sustainability Officer, Rebecca Harvey.
Hey, we're not pulling anything off the Consent Agenda yet, right?
Correct. If you'd like to do it ahead of time, you're more than welcome to.
I will wait. I'll keep waiting.
Okay. All right. So may have the agenda approved as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I will begin the informational items. The first two things is that we are having an F dot meeting regarding the intersections of 95 and Boynton Beach Boulevard and Gateway, Tuesday, August 29th. There are some flyers on the back table. It will begin at 5:30. In addition, the business tax receipts and certificates of use have been sent out in the mail for all businesses in the city of Boynton Beach. So that deadline, I believe, is September 30th to pay those. Okay. So on August 2nd, I attended the Teen Cop Academy for their crime scene investigation role-play over at the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. And I was fortunate enough to attend the Arts Camp Art Showcase, and I hope I did a good jibe putting out to all the commission's awards. On August 3rd, I went to the Literacy Coalition and attended the Business Development Bureau's Bright Line behind the scenes. I'm very excited for our new Bright Line station in Palm Beach County. I attended St. John's Back-to-School Event. And then on August 7th, I was on a panel discussion for the Inconvenient Sequel that was moderated by Congressman Ted Deutsch. On August 8th, I attended the Healthier Boynton Beach Advocacy Committee. On August 9th, I attended the Boynton Beach Chamber Luncheon with Felicia Combs, and that evening attended the big, the Boynton Intracoastal Group's event. August 10th, I went to the new Carvel Ice Cream opening in Boynton Beach Plaza, just next to the Little Caesar, and attended the Town Square Public Input Meeting for the playground. On August 11th, I went to the Hispanic Bar Association's La Barga Lunch, and that evening attended the Connect to Greatness event, which is really exciting. August 12th, I was in Pearl City for the Habitat for Humanities luau. On August 3rd, I went to the Barisaw Association of Florida event at the South County Civic Center. And then yesterday, I was at Pointe Anne in the morning for the High Five for Success Initiative, and I spoke at the Veterans Park for the Victory Over Japan. And I heard we have some people from the Florida Career College to learn about government, so I'd like to welcome them as well. All right. Commissioner Casella, would you like to go next?
Just one thing that we had, I had the opportunity to have a seat at the roundtable discussion about opioids the other day at Palm Beach State College. It was held by Senator Matt Valer and Senator Niedron and Melissa McKinley, Commissioner Melissa McKinley. And they were hosts of representatives all around from the state, and sober home owners, treatment center operators. And I think we finally got the message here out that there is definitely a problem with the opioids overdosing here in Palm Beach County, not only in Palm Beach County, but all through Florida, probably through the whole country. So I was proud to represent Boynton there, and we got a lot of good discussion that went around, and I think it's going to be taken to the next level up there at Tallahassee, and I'm looking forward to that happening. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus?
Good afternoon, everyone. So what I just have to report is I did attend a check presentation by BIG, which is Boynton Intracoastal Group, to honor our police and fire departments. So $1,000 check was given out to both, and this was a great time to just honor our individuals for public safety who put their lives on the line every single day protecting our city. So on behalf of BIG, we want to thank those individuals, and again, continue to make sure we honor them and show them our appreciation, because sometimes goes unnoticed what they do every single day. I also attended the Town Square Input Meeting regarding the Kids Kingdom Playground, and there was a lot of input, and there was a good amount of people in the community, especially moms and the people who actually frequent that playground. So it was a good time to hear that input and get those perspectives. I definitely want to see that playground preserved, its character preserved, and the ability for the future to be able to still see and cherish the past, and that's what that Kingdom, that Kids Kingdom Playground does. So we'd like to see that continued. So that is all I have for now. Thank you.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you, sir. On Monday, I had the privilege of attending Pointe Anne Elementary School, which is my alma mater. Their first day back to school, there was almost 30 of us out there, which we greeted everyone. They was excited as young people. I think the parents was more excited than the kids. I know I would have been. Okay, I went to the Chamber of Commerce luncheon, and I just want to report that I'm kind of a little dismayed with this city when it comes to the attendance that they are receiving at their luncheon. I do understand for some of the staff here that, you know, we have our League of Cities Luncheon, which falls on the same date for District 1 and District 2, but I really don't think that we're really supporting our Chamber of Commerce, and I really just want to put a plug in for them. I've started back going. I'd like to see more of you there. I'm just saying, we do need to support the Chamber, because that's what the business is here in our community. Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No items to disclose.
Okay. Thank you.
Moving on to announcements. Announced the remaining scheduled Town Square Public Input Meetings. We have one Thursday, August 17th, for the Architectural Styles; Thursday, August 24th, for Open Spaces; and on August 21st, there will be, at 6:00 PM in the library room, there will be a Town Square update to the commission. Next, we have a Town Square Job Fair on August 22nd, 2017, to be held at Carolyn Sim Center, 225 Northwest 12th Avenue. The subcontractors will be there for 8:00 AM to noon, and the labor force, both skilled and unskilled, from 3:00 PM to 7:00. Flyers are available at the table in the back of the commission chambers. Now, we are having different meeting times next month. The schedule for September city commission meetings is as follows. The regular city commission meeting to hold first budget public hearing and adoption of final fire assessment is Thursday, September 7, 2017, at 6:30 PM in commission chambers. And regular city meeting and second public budget hearing to adopt the final military and final budget is Tuesday, September 19, 2017, at 6:30 PM. And now to proclaim August 31st, 2017, as National Overdose Awareness Day, Sharon Burns Carter of the Southeast Recovery Advocates will be here to accept. City of Boynton Beach proclamation. Whereas addiction is an American Medical Association-defined disease, and the stigma associated with addiction must be addressed so that no one feels shame or disgrace over illegal or legal drug poisoning. And whereas drug poisoning is the number-one cause of injury deaths in the nation, with an accidental drug overdose death occurring every 11 minutes, surpassing deaths from motor vehicle accidents or gun homicides. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, 52,404 people die in the United States as a result of drug poisoning, or 143 per day during 2015. And whereas, according to the Florida Medical Examiners Commission, there were 3,228 accidental deaths in the state of Florida during 2015 caused by prescription drug poisoning, including 110 in Palm Beach County. And by acknowledging all those who have been affected by prescription drug poisoning, we help the general public understand the effects on the community. And whereas, the city of Boynton Beach remains committed to raising awareness in order to combat stigma and educate our community about prescription drug poisoning prevention. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 31st day of August, 2017, as National Overdose Awareness Day.
Thank you, Mayor Grant, and thank you, commissioners. There are 23 million Americans in recovery today. On behalf of them, Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates, Ian Motter Foundation, and the Fed Up National and Local Coalitions, I would like to thank the city of Boynton Beach for all of your continued support with the ongoing national health crisis of substance use disorder. In addition, this year, I would also like to thank Mayor Grant and the city of Boynton Beach for the work, I understand, is ensuing with the Florida Association of Recovery Residences to address the issues relating to sober homes. It takes a unique sensitivity to respond to these situations. As a person in long-term recovery and the mom of two persons in recovery, I personally wanted to thank you for your help.
Hi, I'm Linda Motter, president of Ian Motter Foundation and founding member of Southeast Florida Recovery Advocates, and we just want to show our appreciation and thank each of you so much for supporting us on this very critical day across our nation. Also, you know, we've been hearing like a lot of really bad news out there, but I just want to praise our officers who are in the room today and across Palm Beach County for all of their heroism and hard work in helping save lives. They are making a difference, and we know that you're putting your own lives at risk many days, and we really appreciate everything you're doing. We also want to praise our fire rescue workers. We're working very closely with law enforcement and fire rescue, along with the state attorney's office, on the sober home issues. And I just want to let you know, there is some good news out there. These guys, the bad guys, are getting arrested, and we're very grateful for the awareness that's going on in our recovery community. And there's also a lot of lives that are being impacted by this. We're working in the trenches here, so we are seeing a lot of young people coming into the rooms of recovery, and we are seeing them get this. So we're seeing a lot of real miracles that are happening as a result of law enforcement efforts and our community support. And we just want to thank you and continue to praise you for all your support in the community of Boynton Beach. Thank you so much.
There is a rally at FAU on August 31st, beginning at 5:00 PM. If you're interested, we would love to have you. We're going to be marching to the K Auditorium, where Commissioner McKinley will be the keynote speaker, along with Dave Ehrenberg and Al Johnson and some other people. If you're interested, please go to feduprally.org and go to the local rally section. Thank you.
Next, we have a presentation of a certificate and check to Rodolfo Ledezma, grand prize winner of Sister Cities International 2017 Young Artists and Authors Showcase Competition.
Jeannie Havlin with Boynton Beach Sister Cities. For 14 years, Boynton Beach Sister Cities has participated in Sister Cities International's Young Artists and Authors Showcase. We have a local competition for middle and high school students. The Arts Commission of the city of Boynton provides the judges for us, and then we send the winning work to Washington, DC for the international competition. So we were really, really excited this year when we got an email from Sister Cities International that Rodolfo had won the grand prize for the US students in the international competition. So Rodolfo had attended South Tech last year, and is going to pursue a career in architecture, I hope, which is fitting. In fact, his instructor is here, Christopher White from South Tech, who's done a fantastic job with the art every year. So Rodolfo will receive a $1,000 award from Sister Cities International. I had to tell him tonight, the check's in the mail. It got lost and is being reissued, so he should have it next week. We are also going to give him a free pass to the traveling sauna in November. And all of the winning art and essays will be part of a Sister Cities International traveling exhibit that Boynton Beach will be hosting for the month of April. I don't know where yet. I will be working with, I guess, Debbie and the mayor to figure that out as we get closer. So do you want to present that?
Rodolfo? I just want to congratulate you again for your wonderful piece of art. That's amazing that you are the winner in the entire United States, and so I wish you the best of luck in your architectural career, and look forward to you designing great buildings in Boynton Beach in the near future.
Can we get a picture with the teacher and with you, Jeannie? Can you take a picture of all that, Carol? All four of them? I think that would be nice. Get in front of the podium.
Okay, come right in front, yeah.
Don't be scared. We don't bite.
And next, we have Colin Groff introducing Rebecca Harvey.
Yeah, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. We wanted to introduce you to Rebecca Harvey, who we, she's been on about two weeks now, a little bit over two weeks, and she's our new sustainability coordinator. She's been hired to carry out all of the initiatives that are in our Climate Action Plan, plus a whole lot of other things we've already assigned her. So she's already hit the ground running. But we want to introduce you because she's going to be working with every department in the city, and hopefully soon with other businesses who are looking to create a sustainable environment for their business and for the city, in all areas, energy, transportation, you know, housing, neighborhoods, you know, the works, especially environmental sustainability, so we all have a nice place to live. So with that, I don't know, I'm going to let her say like one sentence, and then we'll be done.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Colin. Thank you, Mayor Grant. Thank you, commissioners. Mayor Grant, I especially like to thank you for participating in an event I organized last week, An Inconvenient Sequel, a new documentary about climate change. The mayor was gracious to come and participate in our panel afterwards, and spoke about the city's sustainability initiatives, solar projects, et cetera. He was awesome. I look forward to working with you all. As Colin said, they're keeping me very busy already, and I'm honored to be a part of the leadership that the city has already shown in sustainability and resilience. Thank you.
Before you leave, I need to know, where is your office located? Phone number? I'm just saying.
I'm in the utilities building temporarily.
Okay, which utility building?
124 East Wilbrae, East Water Treatment.
Right.
Thank you.
She's new. She's a learning person.
Two weeks, yeah. I still get lost.
Welcome. I'm just saying, but you know, when we have new employees, I like to know where they're located, if any citizens need to find them or get something done, you know where to look.
Thank you.
Moving on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
Crystal Spears, office address 181 Southeast 5th Ave., in Delray Beach. On behalf of Habitat for Humanity, South Palm Beach, we would like to present Mayor Stephen Grant with the Pink Hammer Award for coming out and being a Habitat city leader and for always coming to most of our events.
Boynton Beach for their continued support to our Habitat mission. On your agenda tonight is the transfer of property over to us. With the transfer of those lots, we will be able to build four new low-income housing homes within the city limits. We're very proud of that. The CRA has also given us a lot on MLK, which will be the third home that we're building on MLK Boulevard. Again, we're moving forward, and we're moving forward faster with the support of the city of Boynton Beach. Thank you.
I do need to do a disclosure. I met with the two of you last week. I'm good now.
Good evening again. Pastor Richard Dames, 233 Northeast 12th Avenue, Boynton Beach, president of the Boynton Beach Coalition. I just want to thank Mayor Grant, Vice Mayor Katz, Commissioner McCray, along with Chief Katz, members of the fire department. As we initiated our first phase of the High Five success at Boynton Beach on yesterday, there was a lot of positive feedback from our parents in the city, just seeing all of the coalition members, community members, and our government officials there to welcome back our kids. I want to apologize to Vice Mayor Katz. We were on the wrong side of the building with the hot sun there, so next year, we'll be on the good side. But it's through efforts, combined efforts, through our police, fire, elected officials, and clergy, I think that is going to galvanize the divide that has been in this city for so long. We all can agree that with the rise of bullying and peer pressure, the last thing they need is that to be in our school, and it is on the rise. So I just want to commend you all for taking time out of your business schedule to come out and to welcome back our kids. And on next year, we plan on expanding to some of the other schools, hopefully Boynton High, Galaxy, and Congress. Job well done. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, city commissioners. How is everybody tonight? My name is Lori Wilkinson. I live at 2458 Southwest Cranbrook Drive in Boynton. This is my daughter Kathleen, and I am actually here, first of all, to say thank you, because at the last commission meeting, you guys reappointed me to my spot that I've been on for 17 years, on the Education and Youth Advisory Board, which I was inadvertently removed from, so I'm very pleased to be back on that board. Kathleen is a student member on that board as well, and we are not here representing that board in any capacity, because I haven't actually talked to them about this yet. This only just came into my head yesterday. But I wanted to call to your attention an issue that is going on with the Theater Academy of Boynton Beach High School. Last year, and this is not, preface this with, it's not meant to be disparaging at all, but last year, they changed principals at the end of the year, and the old principal excessed three of the Theater Academy teachers out of four. So I don't know if you guys are aware of the program at Boynton Beach High for the Theater Academy, but the school district is trying to push that as the Dreyfus of the South, right? Boynton High is making a name for itself with their Theater Academy, and right now, they have one teacher. I am very well aware, as I was a school board member for 20-something years, or it's not member, but a teacher, I'm very well aware that you have no control over that. However, I also was a big part way back in the day, when Commissioner Dennehan was before a commissioner, on the Education and Youth Advisory Board, as the two of us are now. That group of citizens, along with the city commission, got Boynton Beach High School built. We wanted a school in our own community for our own children. And now, the school has been through its ups and downs and is doing some amazing things, and I'm very concerned about this. It's definitely, like I said, not meant to be disparaging, but I wanted to call it to your attention. I'm going to let Kathleen take a minute. I don't know if she gets to be a separate person or we're together, but some of the awards and scholarships they have gotten are absolutely unbelievable, and I really would appreciate any support you guys could give if they come with, you know, funding requests, or if you can even think of people that might need, you know, that might be able to help them. We don't have a Dreyfus at Boynton High yet. We need an Alexander Dreyfus, right? So anybody you might know. So I'm going to let you start the timer over, and you can introduce yourself.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kathleen Wilkinson from 2458, same as her. I'm a student at Boynton Beach High School Theater Academy. We have grown exponentially. I'm a junior this year. We've grown exponentially throughout the last few years that I've been at the school. We had a teacher last year, Mr. Gilbert. He was our assigned musical theater teacher, and he helped us by, he established our musical theater program is better, because before, we hadn't really had one. So we did Little Shop of Horrors, and that turned out much, it turned out amazing. And is that?
No. You keep going. You were supposed to reset it.
Okay. So we had Little Shop of Horrors, and it was a huge success. It brought community members, students, everyone to the theater to see how we had improved. And we also, we get awards and stuff at districts. We do one act competitions. We got an excellent last year and a superior the years before, and we were the Critics' Choice alternate, which is like the best you could be. And our students at the individual events competitions have received superior ratings, excellent ratings, and some have even been the state representative for their event. And that means they get to go to the state competition and show off. And our student last year, Rachel, she was a senior, she got superior at state, which is the best you could do. So we're a really strong academy, and we need support, basically.
Well, thank you so much for letting us know. I went to the Little Shop of Horrors play, and it was amazing, and I'm sorry to hear that this has happened, so I will speak to whoever I can, if you let me know who to speak to.
As I said, I know it's kind of out of your control, but it is our city and our community, and the arts are important, so I just wanted to let you know.
Absolutely.
Thank you guys so much.
You're welcome.
But Lori, since you're a member of the Education and Youth Advisory Board, you need to meet with the new principal and then let him know your concerns. I'm just saying, and let him know that you have appeared before us, okay? I'm just saying, with the first, then go to him.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you.
Cindy Falca de Carrato, 316 Northwest 1st Avenue. I just basically wanted to make a statement as a public citizen, and I see that we gave an awareness to drugs and ODs. And I just heard on the news yesterday, the other day, that in France, 235 young children, six and under and over, in that six and over, excuse me, were hospitalized for taking cannabis, which their parents smoke in their home medicinally, and the children are having all kinds of problems. So I know that you're going through with what you said you're going through, but I want you to really study some real statistics and things that are really happening around the world that would help these precious ladies with their drug situation, and we would not have ODs. But thank you.
First of all, I want to show you what I was talking about.
Sorry, sir. You need to have, you have to start the clock. What is that?
That's a timer.
Okay.
Just for the audience, it's a blinking yellow warning before the light turns red.
The red light camera.
For the red light cameras, it just shows you, it's a timer. Sunny Garcia, 1631 Northwestern Lane, Boynton Beach, Florida. This is the light that I'm telling you, it's a timer that tells you that the light is going to turn from green to red or whatever. Like I told you before, I've seen them before, you all know what I'm talking about. I figure that since you came back with the cameras, it's only right that you all give the citizens of Boynton Beach the right to let them know that that light's going to change and time for them to stop at a light or prevent wrecks before they get to the intersection. I figure that you all need to listen to the citizens of Boynton for a change and discuss this issue about the timer on the light that warns people that that light is going to change. All it takes is a letter from you to the state, the county, whatever, to get this installed. And if you don't get it installed, it's worth a try. At least you're doing something for the citizens of Boynton, not working against them but with them. And like you said, Mayor Grant, you know, if they get a ticket on the red light, they deserve it. But if there's a warning that tells them the red light's going to change, it could help the city in a lot of ways. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll talk with the FDOT or the county to see who controls that. When I went over to Taiwan, they had those, and they're very informative because it's just like when you cross the street and then you have the timer, it lets you know how long you have to cross the street. So we will definitely move forward with that and hopefully pass a resolution to see if we can get something like that moving forward.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Representative Emily Slossberg. My address is 7499 West Atlantic Avenue, Delray, and I want to say thank you to the mayor and to Commissioner Casello for inviting me here tonight. I want to introduce my staff, Denise Ozalton and my district secretary, Ed Sol. I'm here to thank the commissioners for putting the resolution urging the legislature to make texting while driving.
Excuse me. I'm sorry, but the rest of the people did not see you all. I'm sitting there looking at you. I'm just saying, can y'all just turn around and let them see you?
Denise Ozalton and Ed Sol, this is my staff. We represent District 91, which is, it encompasses parts of Delray, Boca, and Boynton Beach. It's between military and the Turnpike. And one of the bills that I've been championing is texting while driving, making it a primary offense. Currently, the number one cause of death for teenagers is traffic crashes. Florida's only one of four states that have not passed primary enforcement. And so currently, a 16-year-old who just passes the driving test can text his friends, his or her friends, "Oh, I just passed the test." And there's nothing that an officer can do. He could just watch it because it's a secondary offense. That means the young driver has to be doing something other than texting while driving. And currently, it's just unenforceable. So I've been asking county commissioners and city commissioners throughout the entire state to pass a resolution urging the legislature, and it's been incredibly successful. I'm glad to be here in Boynton Beach. It's close to home. I've already had the city of Boca, the city of Delray pass it, and just working on the rest of the 67 counties. But there has been a record amount of calls, emails, and letters coming to my office saying thank you so much. Because I'm, you know, this is something that's very personal to me. I lost my twin sister in a car crash, and I was almost killed. And I don't want anybody else to go through it, so I'm doing everything I can to make sure that we get a chance in Tallahassee. So last session, I filed the bill, and in the Senate, it passed out of two committees. However, in the House, there was no, not one hearing. I passed it for under 18, I mean, I filed it for under 18 for everybody and also for school zones. Not one hearing. And it's, I just, you know, I'm not sure if Tallahassee's not focused on public safety, but we have to. I mean, there's an outcry from our residents that we need this. We have a culture on our streets of everybody texting while driving. Parents are setting bad examples for their kids because, you know, there's nothing right now that's stopping them from doing it. So I just want to say thank you so much for putting this resolution on your agenda and having a public safety focus here in Boynton. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Slossberg. I followed you up there in Tallahassee, and I know you had a hard time getting heard in the House, but maybe this time, with these resolutions signed, we can bring them up there, present them to the legislator up there and say, look, this is what the communities want. And maybe this time, you'll get the hearing, and we can get this passed up there because I think that's where it needs to be.
Seeing no more. Moving on to administrative. And who's first? None, 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 none. Looks like Commissioner Casello, Planning and Development Board, alternate.
Planning and Development, alternate, I would nominate David Schole.
Second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none. Appointment is approved. Next, Recreation and Parks Board, Commissioner Casello.
Lisa Brown Bandic.
All the, do I have a second?
Question, is Ms. Brown in the audience? I just know that this was an individual that we appointed, and she had to step down, so I just want to make sure that we're not going to, you know, reappoint her and then have the same issue again.
I'm going to go ahead and second it.
All right. Thank you. All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none. Appointment is approved. Next is consent agenda. Would someone like to take something off of consent agenda?
I'd like to take A off, Mayor.
Mayor, did you previously state you wanted to move 12 A and C prior to consent? Sorry. Thank you. So next is the item 12A, approve the release of the following land parcel to Habitat for Humanity of South Palm Beach as requested by the CRA. It is 117 West Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard.
So moved.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, it is approved to release the parcel. Next, we have approved a $1,000 donation to the Home Safe Healthy Beginnings Program from Commissioner Romulus' Community Support Funds.
I'm not sure if the representatives from Home Safe are here this evening. Are they here? No. Okay. Well, if not, then I'll go ahead and just say a quick little spiel about this organization and why I wanted to support them. So we've had several incidences throughout the city and also around a county of children passing away from different issues, just parents forgetting that they were in the backseat, or, you know, parents sleeping with a child in the same bed and rolling over that child, or just negligence, or just different situations that have happened. And this organization, their intent role is to actually start screening parents right then and there at the hospital. So they're based out here in Boynton Beach at Bethesda. They are actually screening parents and seeing if there's any issues that arise right there after birth to basically provide resources. And one of the things that they do is actually support families by giving them a crib or a playpen if they don't have it. And one of the recent situations that just happened to them was that an organization, I'm not going to say, who gave them over 100 beds and then had to recant and take those beds back because they couldn't, you know, they realized they couldn't do that anymore. So, you know, you have this great organization doing wonderful work in the community, and yet they were at a loss and at a hardship. So, you know, my $1,000 is a dent because each of those playpens cost them about $60 or so. But I felt like it was something to help out and to just really give back in that sense and to make sure that kids and their families have a safe place to sleep and, you know, we don't have the hazards of parents sleeping in the same beds with their kids and potentially having harmful incidents happen. So this is why I wanted to share my funds with this organization. So again, if anyone wants to help or donate, or they have cribs or playpens that they're not using anymore, check out this organization and donate to them because they really do some great work here in the Boynton Beach and the county. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus, I'd like some more explanations, like why the beds was taken back. I'm just saying, was it a donation? Are they 501(c)(3), or why was they taken back? I need some more information.
Sure. The organization that decided to donate to them, I guess they felt like they had a need, they had more need than they expected, so they had to take those beds back because they had to use them themselves. So I wish the individual was here tonight to explain more and speak better because I feel like it would probably come better from her. But again, that was the situation where they received a donation and then the donating party decided to take their beds back because they needed them. So like, you know, there's a need all across the county, and that was one of the situations that happened there.
I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion for the approval of your funds.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none. Motion is approved. All right. Now we're moving back to consent agenda. And is there anything else besides A? None? All right. Item A, proposed resolution number R17-067, approve support legislation that would make the ban on texting while driving a primary offense as requested by Representative Emily Slossberg, State House, District 91.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're all in favor of this. I think it's great, and we support that, State Rep. But I'd like to, I find it not odd, but different that we have a letter from the fire chief supporting this, but not from the police chief. So I'd like the police chief to come down and give us his take on what he feels on the resolution of texting and driving.
All right. Well, I saw his Facebook post, so I know he's in favor of this.
I'd just like to hear it from him.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Jeff Katz, Police Chief. I'm an ardent supporter of this legislation. Not only have I publicly supported it on social media, but I've also, in the last couple of years, traveled to Tallahassee to stand with Representative Slossberg's father when he attempted to pass this legislation at a press conference in the Capitol. Texting and driving kills. There's no simple way to say it. There's no nice way to say it, and it needs to be a primary offense. So I absolutely support it.
Thank you, Chief. And, you know, I found it interesting, some of those photos that you showed us with people actually violating the red light cameras, people were actually on those phones, texting and talking on the phones as they went through the red lights. So I think that could really be helpful.
Regretfully, all of us will probably see someone on their phone tonight driving home from this event.
Thank you, Chief, for that statement.
Excuse me. Why are you up here? He brought you up here. You just got back from vacation, right?
Yes, sir. I went to visit my daughter in Tallahassee.
Okay. That's good. You just got back from vacation.
Yep.
That's good. Thank you. Might be a reason. Okay. Just clearing it up. All right.
So may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, resolution is approved. May I have a motion to approve the remaining consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, consent agenda is approved. Moving on to bids and purchases over $100,000. Jim, can we do the, all the items, the proposed resolutions under item A together or individually?
You could do them together.
All right. So we're going to, but I do have to read them. So we have approved the employee group medical, dental, and life and long-term disability insurance programs. Proposed resolution number R17-072, approve and authorize city managers to execute an agreement with Cigna Healthcare for city's fully insured group medical insurance for the planned year October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. Proposed resolution number R17-073, approve and authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Cigna Healthcare for city's fully insured group dental insurance for the planned year October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. Proposed resolution number R17-074, approve and authorize city manager to execute an agreement with Hartford for city's life and long-term disability insurance for the planned year October 1st, 2017 through September 30th, 2018. If the commissioner has any specific questions, please state so by saying which resolution.
I have one, and that's for all three. I need to ask the city manager, did we do RFP on these three items, and if so, did we get the best money for our bucks?
Good evening, Commission. I'm Julie Goldberry, Director of Human Resources and Risk Management. We did an RFP back in 2014 for all of these lines of insurance, and we have, are recommending exercising our final renewal option on each of these plans.
By you being over human resource, you think this is the best that we can do?
Absolutely.
Thank you. That's what I need to hear. That's my question.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve all three.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, resolutions have passed. Proposed resolution number R17-075, authorize city manager to sign the First Amendment to the Vendor Services Agreement with Bill to Pay LLC of Jacksonville, Florida, for additional services to include printing, mailing, and collections of the various city processes on an as-needed basis. Estimated annual expense for additional service is $125,000. Any discussion?
Once again, I asked the question to the city manager, or Tim Howard, I guess that'd be the guy. This obviously went out the bid, Tim?
Correct. Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. Last year, you approved a contract with Bill to Pay as a result of an RFP for bill printing, mailing, and collection of utility bills. In the RFP, we said that the city may want to utilize that vendor for additional services, but we did not put that in the contract that we executed. Since then, we've come to look at the process of renewals and printing of business tax receipts, that that's a function that this company can handle. So we need to amend the contract to put that language in there that allows us to use it for other services besides utility billing. But yes, it was a result of an RFP. This is additional services beyond the utility printing. It's for other services that we come across in the city.
Have we searched locally for people who do this?
We have looked at, in fact, we, for the piece of sending the renewals out, because we didn't have this in place, we did get quotes, and they were the lowest for the printing of that file. So the problem is the printing, and then we've got to transmit the file back when they pay so they can print the license. So this company's got it set up because of the utility billing.
Tim, I have a question. You said that this 120, you did not say this. I'm going to say it for you. The $125,000, this did not go out for RFP. You all are piggybacking off of what's already there.
Right. In our current contract.
Excuse me. That's what you're doing.
Right.
You're piggybacking off.
Correct.
So 125,000 did not go out for RFP. You're utilizing what we already have.
Right. Utilizing, yes.
That was a question that he was asking. That's a question I need to hear, too. It did not go out for RFP. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
And I just had one question. So if we, I know that we have the new bill pay online for utilities, and so is this the same account that, let's say I have a business in the city, can I use the same credit card, and, or is it going to be two different accounts?
We hope that next year you'll be able to.
Okay.
That was the piece that we were not able to get Bill to Pay completely through this year, and we need to get the renewals out. So we're going to continue to work on that piece during the year, so hopefully next year it'll be in place.
Thank you. All right.
As you open up another avenue with credit cards, I'm just saying, with the water bills, we are charged at 1% to 3% because citizens in District 2 are telling me, why are we paying this? Would you use our credit cards? Is this what we're paying credit fees for using our own credit cards?
Correct. The contract that was approved last year had in it that the company was able to pass along the convenience fee or the percentage on a credit card transaction if a customer uses a credit card for payment. If they use a check or cash, they don't get charged it. If they use a credit card, it gets charged because we pay the, the city's always paid that convenience fee, so now it's being passed on to customers.
You, excuse me. You just said what I said. The city was paying it prior.
Yes.
And when we signed the contract, this is why I asked for information today, this was not stated. I'm just saying, you were paying it prior. Now you all are telling me that you're coming back now, saying that you want to pass it that you're coming back now saying that you want to pass it on to the customers. You know, I don't have a problem with passing it on to the customers, but I'm just saying, this should have been stated. I'm just saying, you know, when we first started this year, I had no idea it was going to be passed on. I know how credit cards work, but now, because you all don't want to pay it, you all said now the customers themselves have to pay it. I'm just saying, I think it was a slam dunk, you know, blindsided to the customers. How much was that costing the city a year?
$300,000, I believe, between utilities and general.
See, when you all did your RFP, this should have been all brought in at the same time, you know. I have problems right now.
I can't speak with 100% certainty because it happened a while ago now, but I'm, I'm fairly confident I recall this conversation about the fact that the service fee would be incorporated into the cost of the utilities bill.
I believe it was.
And, and are convenience fees according to law, that we're not making any profit on the convenience fees?
Right. Right, you can't charge more than what you're getting charged.
Thank you, thank you. I'm glad that you all can recall when I went and got the backup, although I got it about five minutes when I walked up here. I cannot recall. That's all I'm saying, okay? Thank you.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution has passed. Moving on to item C, authorize the purchase of a multi-station accessible playground for Barrier Free Park in the amount of $245,799.28 from R E P Services of Lake Mary, Florida by utilizing Clay County's RFP, various equipment and amenities for parks and playgrounds. Clay's County bid process satisfies the city of Boynton Beach competitive bid requirements.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes.
Let me just briefly comment on this. Let me be the first one to say that I'm really excited and happy that this equipment is now here in, in the city at Barrier Free Park, one of our amazing parks here in the city, especially for special needs children. So having this last piece of equipment now that allows for these children to just have complete access and know that they can go and play, and their parents can also have a place to bring them, that that's amazing. So again, you know, this, this is a great accomplishment for the city, and we're really happy to accommodate our special needs population.
Friendly for grandmas and grandpas, too.
Okay, great. Moving on to item D, approve the ranking as recommended by the selection committee and authorize the city staff to negotiate an agreement with Spillman Technologies of Salt Lake City, Utah for RFP number 007-2110-17JMA for RFP for public safety software. This agreement will be brought back to the city, commissioned for approval once negotiated. And so, public safety software, is this for police and fire?
It's for police. It includes their evidence, their CAD, records management, and a number of modules within the police department.
And so this is upgrading it to the 21st century from where it was before? Okay.
But there's so many pieces to it, we need to negotiate and bring the contract back.
I see.
Tim, you can still stay up there. I asked today, you know, to give me who served on that committee. Did I get that yet?
Yes, I gave it to you this morning.
You gave it to me this morning. State then, if you gave it to me this morning, for the citizens who did not get what I got, okay, who served on that committee?
It's in the backup. It's in the agenda.
Does the citizens out there serve, know who served on the committee? This is the question I'm asking.
Teresa Bennett, Greg Hoggett, V. Mastro, Vinnie Mastro, Barry Ann Matson, Sergeant Mcnevin, and Doug Solomon.
All right, how many from the police department served on that committee? Was they all PD or what?
Four from PD. And one from the fire department.
Thank you.
Tim, how much you got in the budget put aside for this?
We estimated in the CIP about $780,000, maybe $800,000 over the next five or six years with a lease. I'm not, I'm not sure what the final cost is going to come in, I have to be honest with you. It looks like it's going to be within that range, but I can't, until they negotiate the price, I can't tell you.
We have that money put aside for that.
Right. It's programmed for the next five or six years.
Mayor, do you recall last year during our budget workshops, we had some good talk about this, and it was an item that was continually being deferred in the, in the budget, and I'm the guilty party on that when trying to prepare a budget for the commission. It's, it was quite, it's quite expensive. But yes, our records management system's sorely outdated, and the commission prioritized that last year and brought it forward, so we have budgeted in our capital program.
I'm very excited for this, but I saw that it was very close between the, the first and second.
It's very close, and I want to commend the committee. They did an excellent job throughout the review, plus the oral presentations, and they were not, the oral presentations lasted eight hours each vendor. So it was a lot of work for the six members and the purchasing manager to get, go through.
So I guess, can you explain a little bit why we chose Spillman over the second?
Captain Mcnevin, I'm in charge of analytics and information for the police department. I was the chair for the committee. We evaluated, we narrowed the, the selection from nine companies who proposed down to three. The top three did demonstrations for us. Like Tim said, they were eight-hour presentations. Each day, we did three days of presentations. The two companies, Spillman and Superior, were off by, I think, by one point in our, in our decision process. I can only speak for myself as far as the decision process goes, and one of the things that was very important to me was, I asked several questions at the end from Superior, and the representatives were not able to answer some of these very important questions that I thought that they should be prepared for when they came in to do a presentation on a project this big. That was a huge red flag for me, and that gave them that extra point to, to Spillman. Spillman, when they gave their presentation, answered every single question. They were on top of everything, and that was the difference for me, and I'm just speaking for myself as far as the, that process. I don't know what the other committee members thought, but that's pretty much, I think, across the board what, what we, what we agreed on.
I was looking through the backup, very excited to move forward. This is definitely going to help our, all our police, and looking forward to get a motion to approve.
So.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Motion is approved. Approve the bid for annual supply of brass fitting and accessories. And this is bid 051-1412-17MFD.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve the bid for annual supply of pipe fittings and accessories, bid number 052-1412-17MFD.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Approve the piggyback of the Palm Beach County contract with Aqua Fire Maintenance and Performance Systems, Inc. of West Palm Beach. With the same terms and conditions, specifications, and pricing, the contract will be utilized for well rehabilitation services on an as-needed basis with an estimated annual expenditure of $300,000. Do I have a second?
Second.
That's your?
Yes.
Colin, I think this is for you. How many wells do we have here in the city? Whomever?
A new utility director.
Joe Paterniti, interim utility director. We have 29 production wells and two aquifer storage and recovery wells.
One. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Ready to vote.
Okay. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Approve increasing purchase order number 170417, $120,000 from $89,200 to $209,200, utilizing the St. John's County School District vendor agreement with U.S. Water Services Corporation for water and wastewater operations and management services through September 30, 2017. Do we plan on getting a new contract after, for the next year?
Yes. We'll probably come back to you in October. This just gets us through the end of the fiscal year, and then we'll bring another item back if we continue to need this temporary service.
Okay, and are we doing it, do we plan on doing an RFP, or?
This particular bid is piggybacked by a number of entities across the state because it's specific to water treatment operators, to work in water plants. We utilize them for whenever we have staff turnover, because we need to staff that thing 24/7.
I see.
Until we can fill the vacancies. So everyone tends to piggyback this one because they go out on the street to do it. We can do it ourselves, but this seems to be the best one out there.
Okay.
My take is that, I had questions this morning because I seen St. John County School District, and I was a little taken back. I'm like saying, what is this for? Okay, but is anybody like reaching out to anybody that could help somebody get a, like education-wise, like for a water treatment operator? Because we, we don't have enough, that's what was told me today, so if we don't have enough of anything, is anybody trying to tell people, if you go into school, try to do this, try to do that?
Yeah, Colin Groff, Assistant City Manager. Yeah, that's a very good point. We, actually, Boynton Beach is one of the few cities, we have an apprenticeship program for operators, so we can bring them in, as long as they pass a few tests, they come in and they work for us for a year or two, and then they can get their license and work up. And we do have apprentices on our staff that are working their way through, and we're giving them the training. Unfortunately, you have to have licensed operators at the same time, and that's what, there's not enough of in the field. So we're doing our part to try to train them. So there's a lot of issues going. It's just, it's one of these things where the, the demand is much higher than the supply right now, and it's a great career. I'm out all the time preaching how great of a career it is. I'll go to any school that wants me. I'll go anywhere that wants me to talk about the career in water. It's a great career. So if anybody's interested, talk to me, and I'll hook you up to the right place.
Right. We used to give tours of the fire department. Do we give, like, tours of the water plant or something like that, the students, to try to get them interested? Is that a liability?
Absolutely. And we're actually going to, as soon as the water plant, and I mean, we did the ribbon cutting, but there's a few more construction projects, we're offering to, actually starting in elementary school. We want to start them in elementary school, get them out there and let them see this work, so we can start getting people into those sciences. Because it is a great career, and we want to encourage people to get into it, because there is, really is a huge demand for those kind of employees.
And it's a very difficult license. The license levels, the ABs and Cs, are very difficult to get, and I think your minimum, your C license is at least 2,000 hours? Is it 1,000 or 2,000?
Yeah, it's, it's a full year of experience, plus passing a test that's extremely difficult. You know, you have to have math, science, and we, but like I said, we're bringing them in, we're training them, we're trying to get people into the career. Unfortunately, we have this gap because we still need licensed people, because the state requires us to keep licensed people running the plants.
How many are we training now?
I, I believe we have six positions right now that are in that process. We've had two successful people graduate, and they're now operators, and they're working at our plants. So we're having success in it. It just takes time to get through all the processes.
I'm good. Okay. Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion is approved. Moving on to public hearing. Jim?
Ordinance 17020, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2 definitions, amending Chapter 1, Article 5, housing initiatives, Section 2, workforce housing program, to convert the mandatory inclusionary zoning program to an incentivized program emphasizing project density and building height, providing for conflict severability codification in an effective date.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission, Andrew Mack, Director of Development. It's been a while, but we finally have this ordinance in front of you for adoption. I do have a brief presentation I'd like to go through, just to hit some of the highlights that, regarding the ordinance. So some of the objectives that we, we have from, from the direction from the commission, we had a short-term objective, which was to look at the existing ordinance and provide flexibility in the workforce housing program, and doing that through encouraging participation through incentives. We also wanted to update the data with current market data. And we also had a, a long-term objective as well, more of a detailed analysis of our LDRs to incentivize workforce housing, looking at overlay regulations, micro units, flexible lot sizes, accessory units, parking reductions. That's something that will take up, hopefully by the end of this year, just, just depending on staff allocation and time, so. Some of the key changes, this is familiar, obviously, we've, we've had this presentation several times now. The first thing is the conversion from mandatory to a voluntary program. We're also using the downtown transient, transit-oriented development district, the DTOD, density bonus. We converted that from, to a voluntary program. We also added a height bonus program to also go along with the, the density bonus. We adjusted the set-aside percentages. We added an in-lu fee for the rental projects. We also adjusted the in-lu fees based on the current market data, and we adjusted the duration of the restricted covenants. I know it's a little difficult to read, but what you had here is the fee calculations for the rental projects. This is basically the affordability gap between a market-rate apartment over a 30-year period, which comes down to $18,380. And same thing for a for-sale project or for-sale unit. This is the affordability gap for, for that as well. These are at 20% of the affordability gap, $39,293. These are the in-lu fee calculations. This was a sample project, just to give you an idea of what type of density, what kind of units you would produce. If we had a 3.379 acre project at 80 units per acre, which would be 270, the 25% bonus at 20 units per acre would, would net 67 units for a total of 337. And then I did a calculation here showing you how many of the units would be workforce housing at 10%. Would give you 34, and if it was an option to do the in-lu fees at the $18,000, we would collect $624,000. Just to give you an idea of what the boundaries were, this is the, the DTOD boundaries. It's a, a circle that's on our zoning map and land use maps. The, we did restrict it to the cultural and Boynton Beach districts only, which are, which is mostly mixed-use medium. So in summary, the amendments are going to create a voluntary workforce housing program, provide flexibility to the developers and to the city, encourage participation through incentives, and it'll be, provide a balanced approach as well. And with that, I'll open up the questions.
Up to the audience. I'll open it up to public audience if anybody has any questions regarding this. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Robert Lewis. I live at 350 North Federal Highway Apartment 510, Boynton Beach, 33435. I'm very glad that Boynton Beach, together with Palm Beach County, recognized the importance of workforce housing and affordable housing. I know that the provisions we had in Boynton Beach, which were very specific and extensive, were suspended back in 2011 because of the housing bust then. There was no building, so there was no sense retaining all of those regulations. And I'm very glad that those provisions, the ordinance, is going to be reviewed and updated. It certainly needs an updating, of course, conditions have changed drastically, and I'm sure that the commissioners and everyone else would agree that when we start with workforce housing again, we should start at a somewhat lower level, and it'll be some period of time until we can take more significant action. I don't understand everything that I have seen or heard. I say that because I may have a limited vocabulary, but when I hear the term mandatory, I think of the opposite. And I think the opposite of mandatory is voluntary. I hope that there isn't any intention of finding volunteers who are developers who are going to say, hey, I want to build workforce housing. I want to have affordable housing. Every apartment that they offer for these programs is a loss of profit to them. So recognize that right away. I am very glad about the idea of incentivizing. It's very important, and it will encourage more developers to give more towards these programs. Remember, they're not going to be eager to give, and we have to encourage it. Other communities, just as our expired or suspended regulations here, provided incentives in the way of greater, or lifting the maximum density to compensate for the units which were going to be workforce housing. So it's a way of offsetting some of the loss to the builders, and that makes sense. a way of offsetting some of the loss to the builders. And that makes sense. So that should be done. And I know that the provisions in the past and those in neighboring communities, because I read about them, allow fees in lieu of. So that if a builder says, hey, I don't want to give all of these apartments away, there is a remedy according to that which we had in our provisions. And for a certain sum of money, which wasn't cheap, they could give that sum of money, which would go to our treasury, our coffers, and they would be free of having to provide a certain number of apartments. And the fee changes from one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom. The only thing that I am concerned about, and I just mentioned this, is that the whole program can be quite dangerous simply because we're dealing with a lot of money. It's not a small matter to builders to donate 25 or 35 or 40 apartments, even though there may be 150 or 200 apartments in a building. That's a lot of money. So I would urge that we avoid the expression on a case-to-case basis, because that involves a lot of problems and subsequent investigation. Why does that building over there only have to provide 12 workforce housing units while I've been asked to provide 40? So it's best to stay away from that. But I'm very glad that we're pursuing workforce housing and it's needed. And the only question that I have really is, I don't know if this is going to be public information or whether it's going to be confidential. So after agreements are signed and we're proceeding with such and such development, is it going to be confidential? How many units are workforce housing and how many something else? Or is that all going to be confidential? Thank you very much for the time.
Sir.
Can I answer that?
Yeah, can you answer that question?
So yes, the workforce housing program is implemented during the master plan and site plan process. So all those conditions are, will be part of the record that's at the public hearings. And actually, it will be part of the site plan. They'll spell out exactly how many units they'll be providing. The one thing it will do, though, is they do have several options than just in lieu fees or building onsite. They can also purchase land and donate it to the city as an in lieu option, as well as building the units off-site as well.
Hi, Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way.
It's like being in school again, Susan.
You can tell it's back to school for me. I, my question is, as a property owner on Ocean Avenue, one of the larger property owners on Ocean Avenue, I'm concerned about the density issue that keeps coming up. What I've given you is a copy of some emails from former Commissioner Fitzpatrick to somebody at the MPO, the Palm Beach County MPO, regarding the need for all the density and the possibility of the coastal link train station, which is why you guys are wanting to build up. And, you know, I'm obviously against density and height. The rest of it is part of the, there's a copy for you too, for the clerk's office. The rest of it is part of the PowerPoint that was, I guess, presented in the last couple of months at the MPO meeting. But basically, my argument is, is this is looking to add height and density, especially along Ocean Avenue. The CRA promised the people, I don't, well, maybe promise is an overreaching word. But we were told we were not going to have over two stories on Ocean Avenue with any of this town square development and any of the development on Ocean Avenue. But with the workforce housing and with something later on on the agenda, that's going to say, hey, we've got the TOD, we need to have higher, we need to have higher buildings and more density. And that's not a good thing, especially when the people were told, we, the people, were told by CRA, or Vivian specifically, that there would be nothing over two stories on Ocean Avenue. And this is trying to exempt and get around that. Notice, the reason I'm bringing this to you is the MPO is saying that the train station is not part of our plan for the next 25 years. So if we're doing this to make the train station happen, they're not even looking at a possible coastal link train station anytime in the next couple of decades. So why would we want to sit here with three, four, or five stories, whatever it ends up being, when we have no need for that? And I know there's the whole build it and they will come thing, but, you know, we were told no more than two stories. And as a property owner, I don't want to see more than that because my buildings max out at two stories. And I already think it's atrocious that I have to look out and see six and seven stories across the street from me, getting past the hideous terracotta color. It's not compatible and it doesn't look good. There's no, you'll see in the email, there's no urgency to create a funding source to go forward with the TOD and create the coastal link station. The cost, the city of Boynton, all the cities who have one of these stations are going to have to contribute a hefty chunk of money. And I'm sitting here going, hmm, we haven't dealt with our fire and police pension problem, and you're wanting us to come up with, in theory, a local contribution of $200 million, according to this email from the guy from the MPO. There's also going to be estimated capital contributions of $10 million from Boynton Beach for a station. Our share of the track upgrades will also be a cost we will have to put forward, as well as an operating cost of approximately $2 million a year. So I know this is kind of out there and off there, but this kind of matches in with the item coming up later on, too. If TOD is part of your idea and part of your thought process for approving or disapproving this and anything else on the agenda tonight, then this is something you guys need to be considering. This is the guy from the MPO saying, you know, why are you looking at this? I mean, read it and interpret it any way you want. But the city of Boynton will not have this kind of money anytime soon, especially with our pension problems coming up in the next couple of years. So, you know, my question is, why are we looking to go over two stories, which is what the workforce housing would eventually be, if we don't actually need it for the TOD because it's not economically feasible down the line? Sorry, it's very long-winded. So that's my opinion and my question.
Just wanted to clarify a little bit. The CRA plan, the redevelopment plan that was adopted in October, does call for a 35-foot maximum height at Ocean Avenue, and then it requires a 30-foot step back. That is still in place in the CRA plan and will be a part of the future cultural overlay district regulations.
Yes, but I understand there's an exemption or an allowance for more for the workforce housing.
It doesn't, at this point, there's no exemptions or anything as far as overriding that at this point.
At this point.
I mean, the cultural district overlay regulations are, will be, are, we're asking to be withdrawn tonight to be at a future date to more coincide with the town square project. So we know, looking at architectural styles, some of the public input meetings, so that we don't create a barrier to the project as well. So.
Right. Well, you know, that gets me back to the whole, we were told there would be no more than two stories. And we, the people, expect the city to live up to that. You know, I think a lot of us don't have a problem with height in other areas of the city. But this is our historic street. This is our shining stellar little place. We want everyone to show up. And the last thing we need are huge tower and canyons of concrete up and down Ocean Avenue. Or even worse, random buildings that are super tall next to everything else, which is one or two stories. I mean, I guess Commissioner McCray and I remember, because we were from here, but I remember all, nothing but houses up and down the street. And small, I mean, I remember when my family's buildings were the tallest buildings on the street. And now we've got that monstrosity across from us. And, you know, it's a little before my time, but there was a huge tornado that came through and wiped out a lot of that housing, which is why we have, I'm sure Commissioner McCray, you were probably a child at the time, but it knocked down a lot of those houses.
Baby.
Which is why, oh, you're welcome. But that's why we don't have all these houses still on Ocean Avenue. We have the commercial because that tornado went through. So it would be not something we'd even be discussing unless you're planning to take people's houses. But instead, you do have one and two-story buildings, and it's just not appropriate, especially when we were told flat out, we were not going to have more than two stories on that street.
Susan, you keep referring to that two-story promise from the previous executive director of the CRA.
I know.
But you know that as an executive director, she had zero authority to make promises regarding direction of the board.
Right.
So that, on behalf of, you know, of her, if that's what she said, I'll apologize that she spoke out of turn, because she, she simply had no authority to make such a promise.
Right. Except that, you know, we all heard it, and we're looking for compatibility. And we, we all know, we've all been places on vacation, go to Frankenmuth in Michigan, perfect example of a planned little historic village that everyone wants to go to, every tourist goes to. And you just don't see the, the super towering buildings. That's part of its appeal. And I think we're all looking to have a very appealing, visually beautiful street here. And my concern is that we maintain that compatibility. And this and the other item on the agenda potentially could, you know, as you said, it's up for debate at some point. Well, you know, let's stop the debate. Let's make our street beautiful. And I think we all want a beautiful street. And we all want someplace that every tourist is going to want to come. And we're all going to be proud to walk up and down. And, you know, let's consider this. And if your idea is because, hey, let's do the TOD thing, let's get ready for coastal link, here you go. You don't need to, at least not anytime soon. So thank you for considering my opinion.
You know, I'm gonna, Susan, you gave us some information tonight, and it's kind of mind-boggling to me. And I'm going to ask the city manager, this came from a former commissioner from, that was serving on the MPO board, and I'm trying to look back here and say about this.
No, no, no. Mike is on as the Citizens Advisory Board to the MPO.
Okay.
That's why it's this year's email.
All right. Let me ask the question still. What about this $10 million from Boynton Beach? This is in writing. You know anything about this?
I haven't had any discussion with the MPO in quite some time. So we, I can certainly inquire and get an idea of where the project is. It's nothing that we've had discussions about.
Eric, you serve on the MPO, right? Did you have any discussion about this?
This is extremely preliminary based upon the reading. This is just estimates. There is no planned coastal tri-rail. It's all in the theory stage right now.
Okay. Whether theory or factual, I'm seeing $10 million. That's all I need to just state. Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
You know, my comments are, is that it's voluntary. It's not mandatory. And so the only way that someone gets to have the bonus of the workforce, the bonus of certain thing, developer needs, is for workforce housing. And so I'm looking forward to having developers want to build more in Boynton Beach to build more workforce housing.
Andrew, I got a question. The adjustment to the duration of the restrictive covenants in the rental, we talked about, is that the cycling we talked about?
Correct. So currently, as it's written in our existing ordinance, it's 30 years. We reduced it to 15 to coincide with a two-year cycle of a housing. Typically, it's about seven years someone would stay in a house. So we adjusted it to make it more in line with that.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
In my opinion, I would, I would have loved to see something a little bit more stringent. But again, I'm just happy that at least this is now going to come out and be in place and we can start at least moving towards the right direction of creating housing for people that live here, not just, you know, that can visit here. So we, we have a duty, I believe, as a city and as a government, to make sure that as we employ people, they can also live where we employ them. So this is the start of that. And it's a partnership between the development community and the government to be able to do that. And I look forward to this project, this project or this process and its inception. Thank you.
I too am in favor of the words voluntary, not mandatory in this. So I'm good.
Vice Mayor, any comments?
Yeah, I think it's a, it's a market improvement over the previous ordinance, which was just restrictive and, and quite frankly, you know, an intrusion on the free market, in my personal opinion, to mandate, as the previous version did, that, you know, units must be dedicated in a private property owner's development. I think that the, the kind of buyout clause allows us great flexibility. I would hope that developers would work, like you said, to exercise more options if they didn't want to put the workforce housing in their projects to, to not just pay the fine essentially, but to acquire land and have plans or potentially build, whether it's, you know, the heart of Boynton or anywhere else in the city. But I like the idea that, that theoretically, they could choose to use that money any which way they see fit to provide workforce housing, not just give the money to us and then we become kind of the government that's building houses all the time or contracting to. So I like the flexibility. Yeah, that's really all.
I just got a quick, Andrew, if they opt to buy out and give that sum of money, whatever it might be, where does that money go, actually?
Yeah, the city has a housing trust fund. So that money would be deposited in the housing trust fund, and then it would be the preview of the commission at some point to utilize that for furthering workforce housing in the city.
Okay. But it has to stay for that sole purpose?
Correct. Yeah, it's like enterprise fund. It has to.
Has to stay in for that purpose. Okay.
Andrew, regarding that statement, it's only can be used for workforce, not affordable?
Well, affordable is a part of the workforce in this.
No, I understand that. But I'm saying those, that community trust fund, or whatever you just call it, it can only be used to build workforce or not affordable?
It would be used mostly for workforce, yes. Correct. There is a percentage that could go towards affordable. There's a smaller percentage. If you looked at the math in here, it's 25% can be used for affordable. So, but majority of the money is for workforce housing.
Any further discussion? May I have a motion to approve? May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Cassello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Ordinance 17021. An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending ordinance 8938 by amending the future land use element of the comprehensive plan for property commonly known as Town Square and described herein, owned by the city of Boynton Beach, changing the land use designation from public and private governmental institutional and high-density residential to mixed-use medium, providing for conflict severability and an effective date.
Jim, I got a, during my meeting with the city manager, you're doing this now because there's a 90-day requirement for the Department of Economic Opportunity to review it? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you hear? I'm sorry. Maybe I didn't lean forward. Yes, is the answer.
Excuse me, Mike Rumpf, your planning zoning director. That's it?
Applause.
Thank you, Michael.
Best presentation yet.
Okay. Step is enthused to present this item to you. There's infinitus, really two points of infinitus behind this, which is, one, a proactive implementation of the city's, city CRA's Community Reinvestment Plan implementation. It is also a necessary step, prerequisite and part of the partnership program that the city's engaging in now, the P3 partnership, which is enabled by formal statutes. Location map here points out a couple of things. It's general proximity to a major intersection downtown, being Seacrest Boulevard and Boynton Beach Boulevard. Also, it's proximity to what has recently been discussed, is the downtown future commuter rail station, and its proximity within the transit core, which is important to, in connection with your prior item with respect to bonus, bonuses in terms of being within that area and the provision of workforce housing. I'm going to jump around a little bit. What is the application itself? It consists of an amendment of the future land use map as well as rezoning. So we are proposing to So we are proposing to amend what's on the map now, which consists of what we refer to as the PPGI land use, as well as the high-density residential land use classifications, proposing to reclassify them to the mixed-use medium land use classification. And rezone the property, existing zoning on this four-block area, I should note, which is approximately 16 acres, consists of public usage, PU, recreation, and R3 multifamily. The application is to rezone the property or project area to mixed-use three. Both the land use and the rezoning are in connection with other items that are going through the process now. One is you previously reviewed conference plan text amendments, again, in follow-up to the implementation of the CRA plan, putting the land use classifications and definitions and so forth in the conference plan, as well as amendments to the Land of Our Regulations. And those are in process now, and you will be receiving those next month. We bounce backwards. Again, some major points to this application, supported by the strategic plan, as well as specific recommendations in the CRA plan. Bouncing again, this is from the CRA plan specifically showing recommended land use classifications. Recall, again, where the Town Square project area is, which is that four-block area identified with the purple color pattern. What's notable is it's the same land use pattern essentially all around it, except on the east side, on the west side of it, west side of Seacrest, which continues to be mostly residential. So again, it's recommended by the CRA plan and consistent with that entire geographic area. Bouncing back. Second bullet, city-initiated action. You'll recall, what's important to note is, we laid the groundwork for this ability for a city-initiated item, to promote redevelopment, to support land assembly, or even other partnership projects that the city and/or the CRA may be involved in. This allows us to do a couple of things. That's eliminate uncertainty, particularly by eliminating or getting the land use map or future land use map amendment process out of the way. And as the mayor mentioned a few moments ago, confirming that this, being greater than 10 acres, this application requires review by the state land planning agency before we adopt ordinances. The amendment or enabling regulations that we put into place last year or the year before allows the city to do this without the preparation of rather time-consuming and perhaps expensive design professionals to prepare a master plan. That would come later. This is laying a groundwork with respect to the land use and rezoning for the property. Oh, sorry. For, third bullet, we anticipate a master plan being prepared soon, and hopefully would catch up to this process, and we merge it into this process so it's approved together. And that would be part of the partnership process and submitted, prepared, submitted by the partnership or the private developer within the partnership. Lastly, again, we indicated that it requires state review. I'll show you a couple of maps real quick. This is the recommended land use, mixed-use medium. The map that correspond with the zoning, the same thing, they correspond. That concludes my presentation. Any questions?
So before the second reading, we will have a master plan?
We are hopeful of that. We'd like it to be dovetailed into this process. It does not have to be, but that's our hope. It just depends on the partnership process and the final design stages that we're entering right now for the master plan.
So our meeting on, I guess, the 21st is going to give us a general idea of what's going to happen with the master plan?
All right, I'll answer that one real quick. Yes, the 21st, we're going to be going over the preliminary, the first shot of the master plan that'll be coming forward. And yes, the plan is to dovetail with what planning and zoning is doing with that master plan as it comes back. We're trying to do this in order so when it comes time to make the decisions, everything's in place to make any decision that you choose to make.
Okay, great. And so we.
No, thanks. You saw the blank click in my face.
Right. And so one of the things that I know was a concern was regarding the historic structures in this area, and we can indeed restrict them so that there is no sort of losing that sort of historic structure?
Sure, there's various tools that you could use to make sure those are preserved, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, I got a quick question. I'm looking at the reviewers here, and your name says reject it, and I see Andrew Mack's name, reject it. Is there a reason why everyone else approved it and you two reject this?
You may be looking at the whole history of it. So if you scroll down, you're going to see.
To make modifications.
That's part of the novice process. If there's an amendment in it, a change to it, modification or something, it gets kicked back to the prior review step or the creator.
I got you.
Well, my take is that I really think that we need to open this up to the public because PND, they kicked this project down, and I need to find out what happened because Mr. Mack, you gave me a page this afternoon, sir, that I read, and after we hear from the public, and I'm going to read it again, because what you told me, I cannot support this. So I need to hear from the public, and I want to go there, and want me to keep on going.
Want to, any other comments from the board before we open up the public? Seeing none? All right, it's now opened up to the public.
At 67 Midwood Lane, Chair of the Planning and Development Board. The mayor kind of, sort of, made a comment towards this. We did vote it down five to two. My concerns and ultimately the concerns of the board were a couple-fold. One was that Planning and Development Department had taken this rectangle and included in it with this possible zoning of, I think, what, 63 odd units per acre, the library, the high school, the schoolhouse museum, the amphitheater, and Kids' Kingdom. And my concern, as well as the board's concern, was that someday they could be knocked down, and then the buildings could go up in their place. And if it's the intent of this commission to save those parcels, with the library in part, or the amphitheater in part, or whatever, then something needs to be done to make sure that that doesn't happen. Another concern that I brought up was that there's a set of apartments, condos, which I believe are on First Street. I believe there's 12 of them, Mike. I don't know if I'm right or wrong, and I believe there's 12 of them. I don't remember the name. They have a little kidney pool behind the back. And one person owns four units, and that's being included into this rectangle that you see up there. And it's my opinion that you're giving this apartment complex, stroking them a check that might cost the developer more money, or even the CRA more money, if they're the ones who want to buy it. Because right now, I think they're zoned for 11 or 12 units per acre, if I'm correct, Mike? Right. And now you're going to possibly upzone it to 50 or 60, which would give them a large increase in the value of their property, at no cost to them, but maybe at a cost to the developer or to the CRA. So my suggestion, or our suggestion at the board, was to carve out that parcel and see whether or not it should come back in later. I don't know if you have any questions of me. I'll be sure to answer them.
I just got one. Fear of knocking down the old high school?
Well, that was a concern because they were going to be included in that zoning district.
But we're just putting $10 million into it.
I'm not saying it's going to happen, but you need to put something like a covenant or something like the mayor spoke about protecting that, because they are included to be able to go up, that area to go up to 63 units an acre. I'm not saying it's going to happen, but you need to protect it. That's what I'm getting at.
And that parcel of land you talked about, wouldn't that parcel's value go up if this, what we're going to do here in this Town Square, that cost, the value of that land would automatically go up, I would imagine?
About the apartments I'm speaking of?
That's right.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, and that's what I'm basically objecting to, is that you're basically increasing.
Well, even if we didn't rezonate, I mean, if the state, if we cut that out, okay, just building around, what we're building around that parcel, that land value would go up in value, no?
I'm not.
I think all these houses around here, properties around the project, are going to be going up in value quite significantly.
Well, you're asking me a question, let me answer. I'm not a real estate expert. I do know that it would go up in value if you included in the zoning. Whether it would go up in value if they were carved out, I can't speak to. Maybe that would happen.
Oh, I think I could. I think it will go up.
Okay. Anything else?
No. And, you know, regarding the hypothetical, who knows? And yeah, I definitely would want to deed restrict all of the historic buildings. And so I will make sure that whatever's there, that the city gets to stay there, and is always the city's.
Okay, thank you very much. That was our concern.
Question for?
Cindy Falco de Carrado, 316 Northwest First Avenue. I just have a question to the gentleman, because my home is in the district on Third and First. What is it going to do to where I live? You did state that it was going to be zoned commercial residential, I believe, which I don't have a problem with, but I don't know what the plans are for in that kind of area there. And am I going to have to have my house deed restricted if I get it historical site? I'm just asking.
All right, just need to clarify again where your property is located. Are you east of First?
I'm west of Seacrest, and I'm on Third and First, Third Street and First Avenue.
The subject application does not affect lands west of Seacrest. Your land would not be rezoned nor reclassified by this action.
Okay, and if I wanted to make my home an historical home, will I have to have it deed restricted?
You do not have to deed restrict your home to have it historically designated.
I just wanted to clarify. Thank you, appreciate that.
Turning the other way. Any other public comments? Seeing none? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just, because I kind of heard the criticisms from PND regarding this, too, and in some of the no votes, I guess, question to either staff or legal, even if we place some sort of restrictive covenants on this, would it not be at the will of a future commission to simply change that at their leisure?
Yeah, as a part of the master plan process, there will be replating. So the properties that'll be city buildings will still be owned by the city. So at any point, you could put a deed restriction on it. And again, like you mentioned, that could be lifted at a future commission meeting. Any restrictions could be lifted.
Go ahead.
But it does include the public process. You would have to do it at a public meeting, you know, we would handle that in that way.
With that being the case, and given the investment we're putting into this, you know, I don't know what the projected lifespan of the building would be post-investment, but I imagine somewhere in the 50- to 60-year ballpark is what I've heard in conversations pertaining to these buildings that we're restoring. I just, I have a hard time kind of binding or attempting to bind the hands of a future commission, because if a previous commission had done so, you know, we might not be able to do half the things that we're trying to do in this project right now. So just, I think, given the investment and the scope of time that this investment will play out, and the fact that unlike currently where the old high school is a neglected, empty building, in the next 50 or 60 years, it will be restored historical property, I think embedded in the restoration and the investment and the future use is difficulty in saying, let's knock that building down that we've been utilizing successfully for decades. So I understand the sentiment behind trying to restrict the area, but I just don't see, I don't see a need, nor would I want to bind the hands of a future commission if they so chose to modify something in the area. You know, again, who knows what might be desirable in 50 or 60 years in the area? So I'm comfortable with as-is. I can't imagine that any future commission in my lifetime is going to knock this building down and throw away all the investment in the history that we're preserving through this action.
Mr. McCray?
Thank you, sir. And I'm going to go ahead and read, and Mr. Mack, I thank you for sending me what you sent me, because I really think that we put the cart ahead of the horse. Okay, and this was done at the 7/25 PND board meeting, and I appreciate that because it says, "Board comments," and I'm going to read this verbatim, and it says, "63 units per acres, too many units, 50 units, MU3, and 13 units, D Todd is a bonus. Why is the private condo parcels being included as part of the application? Rezoning will increase value of land and hurt acquisition efforts. We are handcuffing future city commissioners of theirs even at the desire to downzone. If the city downzones a property in the future, they may have a Burt Harris Act claim." Okay? Jim, you can look that up. Okay, "The schoolhouse children museum and old high school should not be part of this application, maintaining public uses zone and to ensure preservation." Then they said, "Proposed eight-story buildings will affect historic structures," which I do go along with, "by changing land use and rezoning, the commission can demolish, move, demolish, or change buildings any time." I know y'all trying to do your 90-day thing, and public comments came. The city and the CRA promised that all buildings along Ocean Avenue would be limited to two stories. Traffic would be a nightmare. Will the Kids' Kingdom playground be relocated? Am I to address that? Why is the land use and rezoning being done now? This should be done after the public input meetings, which I do agree. I heard around about this plan for Seacrest Boulevard, it should be more east, so not to affect, cause traffic problems. And this is a reason, I'm just saying, and I do listen to what PND tell me, I'm just saying, this is why there's a board that will be put in place to go. I'm not a real estate agent, I'm not a construction person, I'm not a planner, and I don't know, Mr. Mack, your credentials, I think you are a planner. Am I correct? What are you?
I'm an engineer.
You're an engineer?
General contractor, building official.
But anyway, whatever you all are doing, my whole take is that I cannot vote in good conscience for what we're trying to do tonight. I know y'all trying to do it for a 90-day thing, but I represent, you know, the citizens here in Boynton, and I have to vote in good faith. I would not be voting for neither one of these.
Vice Mayor?
With respect to the comments about the apartments that aren't currently city-owned and the property value going up, as Commissioner Cassello stated, that everybody, as soon as we agree to do this, whether we zone that property or not, everyone automatically will know that the person who purchases that property in the future will come in to try to match the height and density and come in for, you know, whatever modifications. They have to. So I just, to try to deny a current property owner the opportunity to see their value increase so that a future developer could come in and buy it at a lower price, then go hire the professionals to get a future commission to then change the density and height, I think somebody's going to make money off of this, whether it's the current owners or future owners of those apartments. And I think that, you know, if someone's owned that property for X amount of years or those units, that why not let them reap the benefit? The alternative is that we don't include that property, someone who is wealthier, a developer comes in, buys it, and then goes through the mechanations to get the value added on after the fact. I just, I don't fully understand the argument of excluding a property owner that's adjacent to this property to spite them, increase property value, so that someone else down the line will then reap the benefit of the inevitable increased property value. I just, I don't understand that argument.
I'm just going to say that, you know, we don't know what future commissions are going to do. And basically, whatever we do now, they can totally undo everything. But the only thing that we can do is build the best Town Square that we can, and that I know that we need to have all of those areas to be mixed-use three so that we can build the best Town Square. And that's it. So Commissioner Ramon, Mr. Commissioner Cassello, do you have any final comments?
I don't.
I do. I'd like to just go back to the beginning of all this and just have Andrew Mack reiterate. Why are we doing this rezoning again, please?
So it's a city-initiated rezoning, and, you know, when you're doing development work, you want to deal with certainty. So I think the fact that the city's going to go through this process and the land use and the rezoning, it gives certainty to the developers when they start looking at projects. So I think that's the foremost thing. Also, with the timing of the Town Square project, we need to get this done sooner than later because of the tight schedule. So because this does have to go to the state, they have to review it, it comes back to you, and then it has to go back to them for a final approval, and then we get an issuance just to keep the project on track. That was one of the main components of why we're bringing this to you now.
Okay.
And the hope is that this would, the second hearing, would catch up to the master plan. And a lot of the comments regarding, you know, specifics of the master plan can be discussed at that point, when the master plan comes afore you.
For the clarification, and I wanted that to just be stated for the record, simply to say and go along the lines of saying that we have, as a city or as a board, made the decision that we're moving forward with Town Square. We have approved millions and millions of dollars from the city and from the CRA. We have approved millions and millions of dollars from the city and from the CRA in order to put this project, which has been in plan, you know, in planning stages for so many years, so many different designs and construction layouts and plans have been made, and nothing's really come to fruition until now. And when we get to the point that we're about to, you know, really cut the ribbon and start the process, we want to potentially put a hiccup into this. And being the representative for District 3, I do not want to have this opportunity pass us simply because we're seeing at, we're looking at some of the potential fears that some individuals may have. So, you know, I believe that this is the right direction for the city, us moving forward with town square and this process in order to help it stay on track and not fall off the rails is the right move. So, you know, with the ideas and the thoughts of the, the ideas and thoughts of the Planning and Development Board in mind, you know, again, reiterating the fact that regardless of what we do and placing deed restrictions and whatnot, they can always be undone. So it's not necessarily that, you know, us saying something and making a stance here is not going to change that down the line. So again, I don't, I'm not in favor of stalling or putting aside the progress of town square in order to, you know, accommodate for those things that potentially may not even bear any weight in the future. So that being said, I will be in favor of this change in this zoning ordinance.
I just have one more question. Andrew, how critical is this ordinance, to pass this ordinance, to tie it into the town square project? Is this a critical piece of?
Yeah, this is step two. Your first step was to award of the contract to the developer. This is step two in that process. We need to get this going as well.
So if this was the fail tonight, this could throw a whole different outlook on the town square project?
Yes, in my opinion, it would cast a lot of doubt on it. Yes.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve?
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Aye.
Yeah, yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
It's four to one.
Thank you.
Ordinance 17...
Can we remove it from the table first?
It's on the table.
Yep. Oh, is it the 22? Okay.
22. Ordinance 17-022, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending ordinance 02-013 to rezone a parcel of land described herein and commonly referred to as the town square from public usage, recreational, and multifamily to mixed-use three, providing for conflict severability in an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Do I need to open up to public comments again for this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
All right. Opening up this Part II, public comments. Seeing none. Any final discussion from the board? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner McCray?
Nay.
Commissioner Romulus? 101.
All right. Moving on to proposed ordinance number 17-015. May I have a motion to remove from the table? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And I heard that the city withdrew this ordinance. Is that correct?
Correct. Staff is asking that you withdraw this at this time, obviously to incorporate some of the public input meetings that we have. We want to incorporate that, especially the architectural styles and stuff, which are a part of this, these overlays. So we want to give us time to incorporate that language and to make sure that we're looking at the town square project, that this coincides with that project as well.
And as for the architectural themes, I'm looking forward to that video, because I'm not going to be here, but...
Great.
All right. So it is withdrawn. Do we need a motion to withdraw it?
Yes, sir.
May I have a motion to withdraw?
Second.
And let me finish. Both proposed ordinance numbers 17-015 and 17-016. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? Ordinance is withdrawn.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 12B. "Approve the release of land parcel owned by the CRA to South Florida Marine in accordance with the approval of, at the CRA board meeting on April 11, 2017." Do I have a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. May I have, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? Motion is approved. Proposed resolution number 17-076. "authorize the city manager to implement procedures for local business preference by administrative policy manual number 10 dot 14 dot 01." Is there any discussion?
I need to know for the public. I'm just saying, you know, the city manager, can you tell us what this is doing?
Yes, I'm going to ask Tim, who's worked very diligent on this, diligently on this for several months now, to give you a quick summary.
Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. The resolution in front of you authorizes the city manager to put in place a administrative policy for local business preference. This is a result of staff, especially David Scott, doing research on other municipalities and jurisdictions that have a local business preference. We looked at a number of cities. I've got them in the backup for you to look at. I did a small comparison of major points of the other ones and then what are...
Mr. Howard, excuse me, I'm going to interrupt you because you're telling me, I'm just saying, the citizens, do you all have this? I'm just saying, they don't have this. I'm just saying, when you give me an example, I'm just saying, they need to understand. I'm just saying, John Doe, I sit up here, I understand.
Right. And it's all online, on the agenda. So the major bullet points for the local business preference...
Excuse me, do y'all, everybody to have the same agenda I have, because I only have five sheets. What you're telling me is that out there for them to read?
Publish publicly on our website.
That's on your website, Lori. I'm not going there. I'm going to the people sitting out here tonight. I want it to be explained.
Right.
Thank you. Yeah, but he's somebody rushing about, I'm asking for questions. When I ask questions, I need answers. Okay?
Right. So the major points to this policy is to provide a preference for...
Hey, Commissioner McCray, I'm sorry. No, no, no. You don't get to ask, Commissioner McCray, you don't get to ask questions in the middle of one, someone's speaking. Please wait till the end of the presentation for all your questions.
I gave you that one.
So this is a policy that we're recommending for the city council to approve, for the city manager to put in place, to give a preference to local businesses within the city of Boynton Beach for bids and RFPs or RFQs, which are competitive documents that we publish. The main point to it is on a bid, which is a low-price type of document. We are suggesting that a local business that has a business tax receipt in the city of Boynton Beach, that we are allowed to award it to that vendor if their price is within 5% of the low bid, or $5,000, whichever is lower. So an example is if we do a formal bid process for, we get a low bid of $50,000. And a local business that has signed a certification and has a business tax receipt in the city of Boynton Beach proposes a bid price of 5% above $50,000, or $52,500, the city would be allowed to award, recommend award to that local business based on our preference policy because they are within 5% of the low bid, or $5,000, whichever is lower. Does that make sense, on a bid which is strictly a low price?
I can't ask questions.
Okay.
Tim, let's rewind. Hash it out. Start over. Just, I would say, as a general consensus for the public to understand, this is an ordinance, you know, I'm going to just kind of jump on my soapbox here. This is an ordinance that is a win, I believe, for the community and for small and local businesses here in Boynton Beach. So I will preface it by saying that. This is a huge, you know, draw for us here in the city, where we are now giving preference to our local businesses, giving preference to our small businesses. That way, when we put an RFP or a request for proposals, a request for qualifications out in the street, rather than talking to the person who's down in Miramar or who's in Clueston, I'm just throwing names out there, you know, nothing against those cities. They might be beautiful and awesome. Hey, just off the top of my head. But we're giving preference to people right here in Boynton Beach. And this is what this ordinance is. So to put it in layman's terms and get all the legalese out of it, this is exactly what this is. And this really helps our local and small businesses right here in Boynton Beach that are, you know, registered here in the city, that have local business taxes here in the city, to help basically reinvest those funds that they're paying through taxes and their, you know, business generation revenues here, to go right back into their pockets. That's what this ordinance is. I've been asking for this, and Tim knows this, you know, staff knows this for a very long time, and I'm really excited to see it be put into play here tonight. So I'm excited to have our local businesses, our small businesses, you know, just given preference. And again, all the different numbers and things will be explained, and I've asked Tim to set up different workshops or whatever it is to help our local businesses to understand exactly how this ordinance works. That way, they can take advantage of it. They're certified, they're registered, to be able to know and understand exactly when these bids go out and what they qualify for, and how they can participate and allow, you know, the city dollars to be put back into the actual city. So that being said, I'll go ahead and give it back to you if you'd like to add to that.
I'm not sure what I can add to it.
Mayor, I'd like to just, and Commissioner Romulus, thank you very much. This is part of, this is baby step number one of our Building Wealth in the Community program that you've heard us talk about and that we will be adopting as part of our strategic plan for next year. And like Tim said, he and David have worked hard on, you know, again, trying to provide opportunities for our local business to get our business as a city. We spend a lot of money, as you can see, when we go through our bids and bid awards and so forth. So as an expansion, that's why we have David here, and he's going to grow this program, is to eventually be able to work with, you know, getting the community training they need from the job perspective to learn how to bid successfully on some of the contracts that we let out. Sometimes that process alone is extremely overwhelming, and it's hard for a local business to understand how to do that. So as, step two is going to be developing the outreach to help business be able to successfully meet, you know, the requirements in a bid to compete. It's easier said than done on some things. Some are smaller, some projects are smaller. So, yeah, you're going to be hearing from us more and more again, but like Commissioner Romulus said, this is step one of many good things to come, I think, in this program.
Thank you.
Can I speak now?
Yes, you may.
Commissioner Romulus, I want to say thank you for clarification. Lori, I ask you, as the city manager, do turn it over to Tim. And this is when it went haywire. If you would have answered what you just said then, some of this could have been avoided. I'm just saying, when I ask questions, I need answers. I need answers for people that are sitting in the public, the audience. They need to hear what we are doing. Thank you, Commissioner Romulus, for your explanation. Thank you, sir.
Well, I think my excitement alone is why I was able to explain it and put it so eloquently. But thank you, Commissioner McCray.
Any other comments from the board? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just, I appreciate staff effort on this and creating an ordinance that finds an equilibrium between, you know, offering opportunities to local businesses, but not at such a kind of cost-prohibitive nature that taxpayers end up paying, you know, 10 or 20% or more for local services, which might have a disproportionately negative impact. I think that the 5% range is fair, and it's enough that hopefully it'll draw local businesses into the fray. So I appreciate the moderation or the kind of equilibrium that was achieved in crafting this.
One of the things that I, my concern is that, you know, October 2018, that we get measurables for this local income, local preference, and so that we can see how it actually affects and see if we need to tweak it so that it is better suited for building wealth in the community.
And there is a piece of this that lends itself to staff being able to get some data to bring back to you. And that piece is to utilize our business tax receipt as the definition of a local business, because we looked at a number of different definitions of local business, and different cities have different definitions. And we felt that if we used the business tax receipt file, we could start updating our existing vendor file now to show which ones were local businesses. If we used anything outside of our city boundaries, we were going to have to wait until they submitted a bid and checked the box that said they were a local business, because we would have no way if they were in Del Ray. It was, so our business tax was a starting point for data gathering.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those oppose? Seeing none. Motion is approved. Resolution is approved. Next is proposed resolution number 17-077. "Approve resolution supporting adequate funding of the Low-Income Home Energy Assistance Program and urge the Appropriations Committee of the United States Senate and House of Representatives to both fully follow LIHEP's enabling law when determining all future appropriations and to restore LIHEP funding to its historic levels." I got this request from Sophia Ecclestone, our account manager for FPL. And basically, she was explaining to me that they have this federal program for low-income energy assistance, and most of the time it goes to the northern states and not necessarily to the states by population, such as Florida and Texas. And so we were just requesting that the state, the Senate and the House of Representatives follow through with what the original program is supposed to be, to award money according to population and not just being north.